Okay, good morning. Everybody's good here? Yes, very good? Monday. September 23rd, 2017, standing in my call of power, Attorney General. Today we have Mr. Scholberg, Chief Sergeant of the Austin Avenue Police and Search and Recovery Division. Please, uh, stand if you may stand in your little place.
Father, thank you today for doing a week even of Monday is going to be a little challenging for us. Thank you for this Commissioner's Court, for all of those who serve on it, as well as in our county levels. We pray that blessings on them and their families, to give them the abilities to make great decisions and to govern wisely. We thank you for fall in the air. I mean, fall is the time for fairs and rain and cooler temperatures, and it makes us all just a little bit happier. Thank you for that. The Lord will know with even the changes of season, and then this come and they go, and this is continued. So, we pray to bless us through the time of change, that you will remind us that you are in charge, that you will allow us the peace of knowing that your hand is on everything as the seasons change. Thank you, Father, for your goodness to us, reminding us that you are here every day. To Jesus we pray. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and indivisible.
First, panel is in, is the preamble of the next, um, seventeen verse seven, twenty seventeen, Special District Report reading, and September eleventh, twenty seventeen, Potter County District Report reading. And then amendments to votes. I also recognize, number two is vouchers. Consider an act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the County Office from September sixth, twenty seventeen, through September twenty, twenty seventeen. Check numbers one, seven, six, seven, nine, one, through one, seven, seven, zero, four, nine, and wire transfers nine, five, seven, through nine, six, six. There's been an amendment to this. Check number one, seventy, seven, four, five, six, amount of thirteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, postage. Which brings the total to... Need a drum roll, please? Seven million, six hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Do I have a motion?
I move that, uh, to approve of the vouchers, as well as what the county does with the amendment, the total of seven million, six hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second, for discussion.
Judge, I have a question. Page nine of thirty-three, check number one, seven, six, nine, zero, eight. It looks like sixty-three thousand for the flooding, emergency flooding in the water. Will we be reimbursed by insurance?
Yes, right. And that's the last, final payment of insurance claim. Anybody else?
I just... This are, uh... How do we handle weapons for the sheriff's office? Do we buy those or do they...
It depends on which one. Are rivals, shot guys, the county purchases, or sidearms that the individual officers have, they pay for themselves.
So, sidearms?
Yes.
Anything else?
Um, just a item of note, Judge, the reason, or these two, uh, that I found pretty significant in this was the two million plus for Motorola, and a little bit over a million for the law enforcement project, so definitely makes the changes in the vouchers. Just in case anyone wonders, that is a different amount.
I have a motion, just sitting on the favor page right now. Number three, insurance report. Let me know if the insurance report, is there any, no change? I'll read you. So, we're looking now at special report. Yeah? We didn't get one, so it's, it's, it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
But we apologize for the delay. It's one of those months, we still have some liches and it is bothering us, but we should have a copy of it there at each of our desks. So, this morning, in Emerald National Bank checking, we're earning one point two seven, sixteen million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Texas Class, we're earning one point two four, three, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Tex Pool is one point zero two, which is four hundred and two thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and sixteen cents. And Tex Pool Prime, we're earning one point two seven, at five million, seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents. So, our total cash this morning is twenty-two million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and six cents. And right now, this time of year, I, you know, our A and B checking, still at sixteen million, and I do choose to keep it at that rate. Um, as you know, this time of year, we go through money a little faster, and, um, I want to be sure that there's operating funds there in the end, but I'm not...
Quick question. Since Texas Class is at one point two four, and Texas Pool Prime, one point two seven, a little top-heavy, I have a prime, are you holding a fair, any particular reason, with Tex Pool?
Uh-huh. Uh, yes, because, actually, I had just moved three million from Texas Class, that was one, two, four, um, last Friday, so, uh, into our general fund, because our expenses have been higher. So, um, I did have it pretty balanced, but I just moved some, and it's one of its best. But because we're earning less, I don't plan on changing which.
Thank you. Thank you. Number five, elections to inform the Commissioner's Court about mock election, Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, as well as collaboration with Emerald Museum of Art for a new, I voted speaker to be unveiled at the mock election. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, tomorrow, we're going to be holding a mock election over in the ticket office from nine to three, and we invite everybody to come, whether they are residents in Potter County, whether they're residents of Randall County, whether they're not even registered to vote. The purpose of the mock election is so that our office has a chance to go through all the procedures, just like we would on election day, prior to it being a real election, but also to let the voters see the new equipment, and they can practice on it, play on it, so to speak, um, prior to a real election, just to take away any stigma of things being new. So, um, just... The mock election is indeed a mock election, and so, sorry.
Chevy, Chevy.
Seriously. Seriously. Because I guess I should say, I say, I bring you to a tree there. So, um, there's nothing on there that, that is tied to anything real, um, but something they should make a few couple. And, uh, so, I'm asking all department heads to please give your staff time to come down and vote, just, again, it's for our practice, as well as for them to learn exactly what was happening. And we have the very same equipment that we have in Randall County, so if you did not drive to Canyon for their mock election, you could experience the same voting tomorrow at Santa Fe.
I appreciate your sense of being one.
And the third one, on superpowers, the one that was winning, when we did it with our, um, our judges, just as...
Oh, really?
Yes, that was one, thank you. Then the second thing we're going to be doing is at ten-thirty tomorrow, we're going to be unveiling a new, I voted speaker, and this has been a collaboration between our office and the Emerald Museum of Art, using a piece of artwork by Jack Boynton from their permanent collection. And so, we're really excited to roll this out. We got permission from the Secretary of State to use something that was different. We also got permission to roll this out after our press conference tomorrow to the rest of the state, so all counties in, say, Texas, will have the opportunity to also buy this speaker. So, we're very excited about our collaboration.
Well, I will be there riding my little health dreams. We're just gonna get riding, like, yeah. It will certainly help, I want you to...
I'm just saying that Joe Pridey's real, though.
Yes, he is. Thank you.
So, Sherlock Holmes, actually. All right, thank you, Holmes. Number six, report on Motorola project to receive a report from the county's project management team regarding progress on the Motorola radio communication and emergency response team.
Yes. Just wanted to give you all... Just want to give you all a brief update on what's going on with the project. Currently, we just authorized the first payment of the contract out to them. Uh, we do have the core equipment, including all the tower equipment, it is in town, just what even be installed on the towers and the core we install. The tower side to the long portion of the center is already planned out, they've been working with Maquette to get all that electrical and paving arrangement. Currently, we have, on top of the radio primary equipment, we have the fire department's equipments, and it's present and installed. It's already in port, uh, we're pulling off from over in the rest till later in the project. One issue, one issue that we do have right now is, the towers that we have originally picked out, they, engineers come back saying that they won't pull the equipment, they're wanting to put on them. However, we, South Plains is off, we build towers, we're just trying to secure land that'll work to put new towers on, but the new towers will be able to put the equipment at high wind line.
How many towers are we talking about?
There will be two, two towers within the county, and one at the law enforcement.
Oh, and last is like, he said the...
The placement of towers provides the best coverage for the county, uh, in the county area for the handles.
Is there a commissioner that sits on his committee with you?
Uh, no.
Should there be? I ju, I mean, it's a fairly significant expenditure.
I love your question.
So, I'm a little, you know, I'm just a little hesitant, because I definitely don't have the depth, um, to ask anything kind of intelligent at this point, other than I know that this came up during the Strategic Planning Committee, Commissioner Vaughn, and I think it was Judge Ward that voiced some concern about some of his bailiff, or there was another courtroom that was not even aware of the project, didn't have the right equipment, and I thought, oh, my, this is a lot of, a lot of money for the county. Are we having county-wide education meetings, like, what will this look like moving forward?
Well, I've been to several, so if you want someone on the court, I've been going to some of them before, prior to now, so...
Uh, in response to the Judge Ward's question about the bailiffs, they were inadvertently overlooked, and that's my mistake. They have been added, so they will have radios and have a channel that they can speak on.
Okay. And we, we, um, we're sure there's no one else that accidentally been overlooked. I mean, I recognize, this is not our wheelhouse, right? We're learning alongside this. We don't do these projects every day.
I've included everybody that I can possibly think of. Uh, Judge, you're welcome to see if I missed any department.
I have lots of things to say. So, leasing land, possibly, or buying land?
The land will either be donated or leased to, donated to the county, or leased to South Plains, since they will be building tower on it. We won't own the tower, we'll still pay rent, or lease space.
And that wasn't in the original monetary projection, was it, Carrie, about leasing space? So, you know, some initial questions start to come to mind about how much would that be every year, how long is the lease, is there interlocal agreements that we need? Those are just some high-level things, and so, that's, that's my question. I go back to someone on the committee, uh, so that we don't have to flush this out and before...
Correct me, Dallas, if I want to, originally, we thought that we could do this, and then they said, you can't get the communication right without the express towers that we have to have. I mean, we have to have the tower, or there's no communication.
Right.
There's just no connection. So, that came as a surprise later, that we have to have those, I mean, why buy them if we can't communicate?
Right. The, the city has towers that they have purchased over the years, they're currently building or replacing two towers. Their shadow for the coverage doesn't extend all the way to the north edges of the county. That's, that's the problem, why we're adding that, add towers.
And then that would leave my additional question, because if I remember right, as a part of this interlocal between us and the city, we were going to provide coverage and redundancy in some areas for them, so I would think that we should, if we're having the lease, and there's a payment every year, we're having to absorb in our budget, we would then go to cit, to the city and say, are you cost-sharing this with us? Because they're potentially benefiting for the constituents in the city.
The primary tower, they won't benefit from, because it's north, uh, north of the river. Their area is primarily within the city, as you well imagine.
Something like that north tower that I...
The trade-outs are the fact of what we're using off of their system. It's, if the system is, there's trade-outs going both ways on the system.
So, would the court be expecting interlocal agreements, or discussion around the lease, or land, land? I know we haven't seen an agenda item in a while.
There isn't interlocal for use of the core system with the city.
Right, but about the land, and the payment, and what that looks like?
To review with history, before this contract, to purchase this system was approved, there was discussion about lease payments for radio towers. And the towers that we're looking at paying lease payments on, or destruction not suitable without some improvements. So, the commission also appointed a project management team. These gentlemen are part of that team, along with Brad and Bert, and so that is an effect, the committee, the commissioners appointed. What they're looking at in the way of towers is actually a better deal than we were looking at at the time, the model of the contract was approved. Better deal, because we find property, uh, hopefully a little bit uncoordinated. South Plains builds the tower, and we did reduce rental rates, is my understanding of what you all are looking at. But the tower, the tower rental payments was part of the deal that was discussed before the model of the contract.
Did you remember something about DPS and, uh, I think we were going to pay back a lot of power for some reason?
I guess I can speak about also, number of towers that did not have been in the original discussion.
I think what you're referring to is initially DPS, we were pursuing them to get them to help with it, let them go on a tower, because they have extra, however, they diverted it all to the border for security, or putting any towers up in the center.
The trade-off with the city is their towers in South City limits, obviously, we would be using the Potter County, the fire department, Potter County Sheriff's Office, we, we were in South City limits. That coverage extends out of the county, we're going to use that coverage for quite a bit of the county.
And when will it still lie?
Projected was February, and the city's having some tow, some tower issues as well, looking late April, May now.
Late?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Number seven, Potter County, the water state in the lease, to discuss expiration of the president of the baseball league lease, the Potter County water state, and potential for a lease contract with San Jacinto County. We have got, I'll have your conclusion before I come here, so... And, um, Ms. Reese is up in this week, I have a temporary question, so, um...
So, we're going to have a seamless transition here, hopefully?
I'm certainly hoping for that. We have people here today from San Jacinto Christian Academy. We have a discussion with Jim in the meeting, and, uh, Tab, and I, and you in the meeting?
Yes, sir.
You looked at me, oh, no.
He can't hold it.
Yeah. And, and, and I think that the, the discussion is that we are going to consider leasing with San Jacinto Christian Academy. You guys have done such a great job in cleaning up the area, and you have a passion for wanting to be there, and so, I see no problem with us going with that, in that route. We will not discuss that today, we'll do it next time. But, do you have anything more to say today?
If this is a done deal, no. If you need convention, yeah.
Going up, just in terms of a little bit of transition, Commissioner Vaughn, so Mike has helped us take the lead, and has met with a representative last Thursday, and I joined him at the tail end of that meeting with Southern Independent. There's always been some questions on the inventory that's in there, right? I think Blue Bonnie Concession has some, some questions, as well as Southern Independent, and that has gone through quite a few general managers in the local area. So, uh, the group went through and itemized what Southern Independent thought was theirs. We extended the invitation to Blue Bonnie to also indicate what was theirs. There was some discussion about what was left, and what would we do with that, with that, like, auction, so all of that is kind of being vetted out, but there was a semi-transition meeting. Mr. Ellison is aware of the September thirtieth date, contractually, you know, improvements is what he was slated to get back to this court, and that is what Judge Tanner has presented to us here. Um, you know, that has always been an interesting time of year, to be very honest, to get those improvements, and then to recommend back to the court of what was considered improvements. And so, Judge, I don't want to speak for you, but I think at this point, you're ready to close that contract and see that transition have eyes.
So, are we very comfortable with the, uh, the complicating, as always, the repairs and construction, the city agents that, I know Mike has some concerns, and, uh, let's see if he's going with it, and those concerns will be... I'm busy with, uh, San Jacinto, there's a possible avenue, we go through and compare that up there without having to tear that down, say, each one of us. So, we'll work together to get that done.
Do you know, Mr. Ellison, has any equipment there?
There was a couple of pieces of equipment, and that's what Mike went and went last Thursday to kind of identify what equipment was whose and where, so I think there's a pretty good list for yous.
They already have about a three-page list that they kept along with them, and a lot of them's trash, but if it was attached to the stadium, it's part of the property, we'll keep it there. Blue Bonnie concessions, there are items that's there, some of it is attached, but it's only because it's cooking grills and stuff like that.
Do they have any conflict with the equipment, these two people?
Not as we know right now.
Well, Blue Bonnie's been wanting to get his stuff out of there for two years.
And he did survive a list.
I don't know what the issue was, okay, we never will come to...
I think it was a tiny issue, Commissioner Vaughn, to be very honest with you, I think it was just the group getting together to identify who owned what, and Mike helped serve in that middle role, uh, to get a documented list of who owns what, and certainly the September thirtieth date, as this is coming up, that was part of the trigger point for everybody to need in identifying what that looks like. And I think as, um, in Judge Tanner, I think our purpose for this agenda item isn't necessarily to take action, we expect a full contract to come back to this court, but just so this court knew as a whole, the transition plan, because September thirtieth is this week, so we knew kind of what was coming, and that potential partnership with San Jacinto. And so, everybody would get a copy of that contract well in advance, and ask questions as we normally would.
So, we'll bring that back in two weeks, right, Tab?
Yes.
Contract with San Jacinto.
Okay.
And, um, hopefully that will be agreeable to you guys, as well as the court, I'm sure it will be. In the meantime, um, do we need to take any action? There's no action? Thank you, Mike, for...
Yes, thank you, Mike.
Okay. Uh, number eight, we're going to pass that for two weeks. Number nine, Westlaw contract for public library, consider an act upon contract with Westlaw for public access to online legal research.
Carrie, did you want to talk about that?
Um, this is just upgrading the package that we've got, the library, and does not accept a one percent, and it increases seven percent.
Still, it's babies, we can go with them, so, uh, legal, Lexis, legal eagle. I say legal eagle, that's not...
Carrie, do we confirm that it had those additional forms that Lexis, Nexis had? I know there was a question, that was, what was most downloaded at the public library?
Right, I don't know that anyone here who's actually seen them, but, I think it's off the, I suppose, too, so, he expected publication on there.
Is there any other changes in the contract? We don't have a copy of that, so...
No, other than like to say, they, they didn't want to say any one percent increases to three, so it's interesting to see.
Good, good. Now, I'll have to see a copy of that, I don't have one.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the contract with Westlaw for public access to online legal research at the Emerald Public Library.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second on the favor page, right? The routine of Bushland Grove improvements to consider an act upon any action necessary to address the email and to search of the Russian eyes to suit the intent and the school.
I don't know if your packets had the, the email, they just lined in, but I do have to be a copy of that this morning. Uh, back in August, we have talked about this issue a couple times, and, uh, back in August, we discussed it, and I took it, and we weren't ready to make any kind of commitment at that time, so, well, what had happened was that Bushland School Board had offered a three hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the project, but, um, we, as a court, I, I felt we're ready, because we had additional questions, so I wrote Mr. Wood, Superintendent, and told him that, of course, we appreciated his offer, but that the commissioner still had a number of questions, and one, of course, is, uh, what is it exactly you want? What is the design you'd like to see? I guess what I was asking him to do is, them to pay for a design, since we have no one on staff to do that, we have to ours. So, uh, before our last meeting, uh, it's early September, he emailed me, I think on the morning of our meeting, and he has some questions, and I'll just quickly read it, since I did have to. I mean, I need to make sure I'm clear on your request. Would you like me to hire a construction traffic firm, such as Shire, Margaret, uh, to draw up plans to widen road, up the estimate, toss them in? If so, what are the chances the court will approve such a plan? His, his question, you know, if he goes all the expense agreed, even going to consider, I understand this concern, but I don't know how to answer this question, and so, I'm coming to the court, too, to help solve this one.
Is this the, is this the road that goes by the school, where it's going to be just really, really inundated with traffic?
That is the main road, and it is south of the freeway main, but it's not the road that was, the school is on. It, that road is south of the freeway, it's County Road. North is a farm to market road, it goes out by the high school, and so, with all the building out there, they have a tremendous amount of traffic on that building, trying to get in and out of the grade school and the, uh, and the middle school. So, they're, they're one that widened, they're one that have a turn line in, so, I don't know, I can't answer this question. I don't know what they're going to do, and I don't know that we can tell them what we can do. So, how should I proceed as to answer?
Tab, what do you think? What can we do as a court?
I s, I see three questions. The first one, would we like him to hire an engineer? I don't think you can answer that question. I don't think the court, the court would have an opinion on that. The next question, if so, what are the chances the court will approve such a plan? There's no way to answer that question. Then the real, I guess, question that maybe could be answered. Well, I mean, would it be possible to share the cost of this engineer? It would be possible. It would be possible. You can't answer that question.
So then.
Unless, unless there is a demand, unless we're definitely sending money, the court will be willing to appropriate the cost of an engineer to approve the road. Wish them a good day.
I guess my question would be, what is, what is Potter County's responsibility towards this project? It's our road. Yeah.
We don't have a responsibility.
We don't have to do anything.
No.
Yeah, we, it's our decision whether we want to. If we were to do something, what would be the total cost of this project? That's our question. Sebastian, do you have any?
Hey, what, what, how long is the stretch of road we're talking about? Do we know?
Well, our total road, where the state road is to the county, that's about a half mile.
That's about five hundred thousand miles.
Probably, at least.
That one billion, Judge.
I don't know what to do about it. We've talked about this for over ten years at least. And I'm thinking if you spend the money and put a turn lane, then they're still going to be back to traffic. Because there's only one road in and one road out. So and there's not a whole lot. And we, we discussed it, we told them to hire an engineer and give us a traffic study on what's the best possible way to alleviate this whole problem. But so far, we haven't gotten a response. But I've known that there is a solution, other than helicopters dropping off kids.
That might be frowned upon.
Like I said, there's only one road going in. If you put a turn lane, then they're going to be all back to on the turn lane. There is some people that go south. I don't know what they do that way for, but they're going to start building other houses. So there are going to be a lot more people.
That's, I think that's the total, the problem is that the building, about four hundred new homes up here, is that right?
Uh, two fifty right now.
Two fifty?
On the other side of Randall County, they're supposed to build something. That county line ends there. Another tradition.
That's a lot, that's a lot of traffic.
They need to understand they're going to have to put some money into the study just to see what we can do.
And I don't like that developers don't do something like that. I mean, to me, that could be a developed problem. And they're wrestling to be with the fact that they won't incorporate as a city. And I don't know what the trigger point is to make that happen, whether it's population. I, I don't know what that is. But I, to me, it's growing pains that they still want to be out in the county, but they really are in a little city now.
And there's, we had talked a long time ago when Roger was here, we talked about going behind the school and building a road, but the access road, the off-ramp for the highway has to be so many feet from that entrance, or else they won't do that either. So there's really not a whole lot we can do. And then hiring a traffic engineer to do this study, and that's just money they're going to have to give, yeah, to give up just to get some kind of solution. That's about the only thing we can do.
Well, to the end.
Well, let's see.
I think, I think that we answered, we've only answered one of these questions. And that is go ahead and hire an engineer, but we can't help you.
We did.
Court, court would like to handle an act of a kind.
Well. One of the things that I hoped as a, when I got into commission, that we could solve problems. And I don't know if we can solve this one, but this is a problem, it isn't solved. It's a business. Well, I, I'd like them to hire an engineer to tell us exactly what it's going to cost. Because we had no, no idea where to head. You can go out there and pump around, widen that road a little bit. Is that enough?
I'm sure, I'm sure you should have that with them.
Yes. And then just try to throw the ball back. Bouncing things off each other's. And I'd be happy to let them know that we'd still like them to see the future, yes.
So they still can't talk us of anything. They just need to do this, it's feasibility type deal, and bring it back to us and see what they're going to do. I think that they, they would probably do better if they did incorporate the city. I mean, is that something that would be logical?
Or maybe there's some chance the city will panic that they're out someday.
There's a reason they would have ended up there, and that's one, to get away from the city. And there is talk, it's not a residence, but it's not a, a move to incorporate it. And that, it's not a big movement, so.
Okay. So you're going to go back to them and just tell them you didn't take any action today? Okay, number eleven, Potter County Extension Office, we are, I say, an open Potter County Extension Agent positions. Good morning. Good morning.
How are you doing?
Yes, very speaking. So as, as you all know, we have a couple vacancies in our Potter County Extension Office with permission for agriculture, natural resources, as well as we would have a vacancy as a law for the position of Chinese Community for Agent Development. The A and R position has been announced on AM Great Job System internally, the internal applicants across the state. I have a little bit about six or seven agents from across the state that may come back with in recruiting for that position. So far, no, no careers, but we, we do have some room to negotiate with you. So we will be pursuing that, working on that continually over the next step. How long it takes to get that position filled. The youth position, the working development position is not yet announced. We need to know. Our goal date to announce that for internal applicants will be, be around November one sometime in that range. As you know, with this last legislative session, extension took another cut in our, in our funding. And so we're a little bit slower than we'd like to be in meeting these positions opened up and announced. But we're going to pursue them quickly in priority positions in this county. We're going to make sure that we can build with the right people. So we very much appreciate the partnership that the commission report provides us, the funding that we provide and filling these positions salary standpoint, from a trial standpoint, grateful for that. We couldn't, couldn't have the impact that we do without partnership and support. We're grateful for that. And you have any questions?
Maybe you have a, you have a new employee here today. We'd like to introduce her, of course.
She and I have. So this is Alina Cunningham. And she is the Extension Office Program Assistant. So welcome to Potter County.
Thanks. Welcome to Potter County. We have a mutual friend.
We do, yes, ma'am.
And so I'm happy to see your face. I hope you enjoy it.
I'm, I'm enjoying it so much.
Good, very, very happy to be here.
I asked Alina to be here because her position actually was the position we were vetting during budget session. It had been unfilled for quite some time. And we were vetting whether we still needed to keep that open. So the agents came and said, no, please keep that open, we have a game plan. And we definitely have a need. So she is filling that role. Couple of things I'll add to Brandon's comment. I did meet with the group last week. No surprise, right? We were already down one agent. So to be down two, I'm sure I got into reaction mode really quickly. So I got to the office to understand the transition plan. And my notes showed that Alina's going to really help with upfront support and working on the curriculum enrichment within the schools. Peyton, who has been there for the Better Living for Texas Grant, Elizabeth, keep me honest here. She's going to be helping supporting as well. Verna is supporting the livestock days in terms of the open acquisition. And then Verna will also be supporting the 4H in terms of the email distribution and meeting with the groups and those kind of things to help kind of buy us some time as we get these agent positions filled. So I think, Brandon, it might be good, as your calendar allows, to just hop in some of these group meetings. I'm sure they're nervous. I got a couple of calls from the 4H families of what's the plan? Tina is moving to Randall County, and we have lost a couple agents to Randall County. Two of the items that I asked as just a to-do, I visited with Brandon and said, well, what's different? Why are all these going to? And now I recognize they have amenities, they have a, a nice arena, right? That, that a lot of their work is done. But they also do some different things in the budget process. So not anything for this year at all, but there is some things that I'm just starting to look into to make sure that we are as competitive as we can be for our agent positions in Potter County. So I, I met with the group last week and certainly thankful for all the work Tina has done here in Potter County. She has really grown up in that office. So proud to see her flourish. And Alina, do you think you want to add to?
Put your own spot.
I know.
I told her, I told her, I told her.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just tell Potter County. Don't go to Randall County.
I will not go to Randall County.
You're on the record though.
No, exactly. It's recorded somewhere.
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things. So first of all, I want to thank you, Brandon, all the things you do, you do a great job. I worked with Brandon as coworkers as both of us county agents. There's a, there seems to be a, an idea out there being perpetuated, which I think is a false narrative, that I'm not supportive of extension. And I want you to know that that's not true. I spent thirty-six years of my life as an extension agent. That's a big portion of, of, of me. And I think during that thirty-six years, I learned what extension is. And I know what a good program is. And my dream for Potter County is to have the best program in the Pan-AL if not the state. And if I question something, it's because of that. It's not because I don't support extension. I see things that could be done better. So I just want people to know that publicly, because there seems to be an effort by some folks to, to show that I'm not. And I just want that to be laid to rest.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We, like I said, we appreciate the support of the court and what you do. And we want to be very, that, that, we share that vision. I want to be admirable and above for the county. And district wants to look at for leadership across the state, Texas in our extension program. And so we want the best and we strive to make the county position quicker. With Rodney.
Thank you.
There's one other thing, I know I've talked to you about it, and I've talked to all the new agents when they come in. But I think it's critical that, that our agents live in our community, in our county. How else do you get the pulse of what the people do? Go to church with them, go to school, you, you see them at the grocery store. That's how you get the pulse of what the community wants. You know, you can hold both meetings, but it's not like living here and knowing what our, what our community is. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Number twelve. Oh, this is, okay, sorry, I'm looking at the. Twenty seventeen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant Program. Consider an act upon the interlocal agreement between City of Amarillo and Potter County regarding the twenty seventeen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program Chief Johnson. Hi.
Interlocal agreement that we have every year with the, with the, with the department. They actually, Potter County has, because it's my. We share a little fifty-fifty on the grant.
What do you use this for? What's it go to?
Equipment, both paid to use for, to sell them. Can buy or do, way we can use this to provide a, say, a party exit.
I make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Amarillo and Potter County for the twenty seventeen Edward Byrne, 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 Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program.
I have a motion and a second all in favor, Judge. And number thirteen, formal bid renewal. To consider an act upon renewing formal bid number one-one-three-six dash point six, Electrical Maintenance with David Moore Electric Company LLC for additional one-year term from eleven-one twenty seventeen through ten-three-one eighteen as per bid contract. Thank you.
Yes, this is a, a standard renewal. We contacted departments that are very satisfied with more electric facilities is also. We did have a minimal increase, but it's very, very small. It's like a dollar per annual. So it's very minimal. Just asking for a visitor and an act upon if you want.
And we renew the formal bid eleven-three-six dash sixteen Electrical Maintenance with David Moore Electric Company.
I have a motion and a second all in favor, Judge. File five to zero.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, Amendment Confessional Services Agreement. To consider a modern rigging amendment in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars to the architect's contract for engineering work and modification of Sally Port revisions and Motorola equipment additions funds our budget to begin with a lot. First, we get this.
Regarding this project, according to the court, it could be all contract amendments to go back to the committee and be presented to the mistress court. This, out of the entire project, we had this as a fourth one. And the reason for them on Sally Port revisions, this is described through some of the down there, some electrical data, wiring and stuff like that. The sheriff helped us put that on blueprints, but we have found out that some of the depths of these areas is like sixteen inches of conduit, maybe twenty-eight inches beyond deeper in order to put in, to repair for the roads to concrete coming through, drive it through Sally Port. So basically, we had to bring in the engineer, he had to redesign it, reroute some stuff in order to get our conduits deeper to where we could excavate through the roads.
Michael, is this on the additions that you guys brought back? There were, no, this is part of the original scope?
This based off the original scope, but we've had to make a correction.
Okay.
The Motorola equipment, Motorola's electrical requirement for their equipment has to be adapted to our equipment. We have to avoid a lot of service out here, and they have one-twenty boat service. So we're having to re, we had to redesign part of the electrical with the attitude room in order to accommodate this equipment. So that's what this is, is a redesign.
Carrie, would that come out of the Motorola funds as opposed to the law enforcement project? Or how would that?
No, it's going to be a law enforcement project.
I think for contract tab, you looked into that to where the county is responsible to provide water, tanks, electrical.
Move to, and move to approve of the amendment in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars to architect's contract for engineering work, modification of Sally Port divisions, and all equipment additions.
I have a motion and a second all in favor, Judge. File five to zero.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Number fifteen, Tax rate fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Consider an act upon owner seventy-five ten Property Tax Rate fiscal year beginning October one, twenty seventeen. A maintenance and operations rate of point six-two-seven-seven-three and the debt service rate of point zero-four-two-two-seven for a total tax rate of point six-seven for one million dollars. Any questions?
I move that to property tax rate being increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point six-seven-zero-zero, which is effectively a four-point-five-one percent increase in taxation.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Judge? Opposed? Cancel, he's already been there, he's still here. Number sixteen, Procedure and Policy Implementation. To consider an act upon implementing procedure policy requiring any salary changes to be available and on which presented during budget process to come before commission for the county. This was continued for the last time.
So Judge, one of the follow-up items was that Scott was going to visit with Carrie to make sure the way our budget was published, he could establish this policy. And that was done, and he comes up, that we should be good.
Okay. Are you thinking about that? Scott, come on up. Did you need to study something, or did you want to say something? Okay, so, we need to have a motion. Implement this.
Rule two. I move to act upon implementing procedure policy requiring any salary changes above and beyond that was presented during budget process to come before commission report.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero.
Thank you.
Rule 17, as we talked last week, two weeks ago, we didn't need anybody to be nominated, and one label, so she can do it. So, now we've got to come up with a name.
I was a little bit surprised at that, I called it in the bill, too, to cheer this bad word about it. She had named, and she is coming along.
She has some issues, she cannot, sorry, we have to come up with another name, anybody can ask one, off the top of your head. Okay, we have a, a bit of a, we have to ask one by next time, something.
Sure, you, how often they need, that's always the first question I get, is when they need and how often?
Generally, about four times a year.
Okay.
It's usually all the same.
And you are the designated person to, pretty much, report from time to time?
You know that? Okay, you realize that?
Just, if you're not, if you're not here, you don't exactly know what it is. So, y'all want to report after each?
Yeah, just a little update, really brief. So, we'll, we'll bring that back in two weeks.
There appears objections to the rate increase, or evaluation increases, and stuff like that. Does the board hear those, or does those appeal?
That goes, the values go through the ARB, they really don't really do the rates.
Okay.
If the values go, they go through the ARB.
It's not this group?
It's not. The order director just basically kind of manages the, because we're kind of going to the county, they make the decisions on what to spend, the salaries and policies and stuff like that.
Okay, all right, we'll bring that back in two weeks. Number 18, employment items. To consider an act upon following employment items. Out of maintenance and facilities, transfer Lawrence Trent Allen to lead technician four as replacement for Cecil Echols effective October 1. Transfer Pedro Christopher Serna, mechanic technician three, as replacement of Lawrence Trent Allen effective October 1. Transfer James Haskins to mechanic technician two as replacement for Pedro Christopher Serna effective October 1, 2017. In the extension office, employment of Alina Cunningham as extension program assistant effective September 14. The resignation of Tina Hicks as county extension agent effective September 30. And then the road bridge discharge of Byron Immol and Southern Molet effective September 12. The discharge of Wesley Pringle as a Southern Molet effective September 31. And the discharge of Calvin Banks as seasonal break crew effective September 21. And in elections, the change in status to full-time for Monica Amador as deputy clerk from October 9 through November the 8th, 2017, for purpose of additional work in November for election.
I move we approve the employment items as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero.
Potter County Project, not any, they want, the jail report, we have 585 people in our jail, and those are females. We receive relevant shelters. Percentage rate for felons is 84%, and 9% is in more cases. If there's any county insurance outstanding, please.
Yes, we have an undercover car into the SO office that was rear-ended. Um, it was a Kia, $12,000. I was given the information that insurance possibly could be lapsed on the driver, but it is. So, it looks like you might have to come down to our insurance, which would be a $2,000, and it's your.
Is that the session, agenda items for next time? I believe so.
It's not in the agenda, we're just going to, a little update quickly, because we have, there's been a pack formed for the, and the assistance district, and we might be on the lookout at letters of the statement.
And then, just a quick announcement, this one's airing 5 to 7 PM at the extension office. They're having a little, going away for, for T M, so anybody's welcome. From 5 to 7 PM.
Okay, if there's nothing else, you are the judge.